Okay. Planning and zoning commission, since we do not have a chairman or vice chair, I'm gonna open it up for a motion to elect a chair pro tem.
Make the motion we like to mark as our chair pro tem.
Second. Discussion? You need to say it.
Any discussion? Sorry.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, well, seeing as I'm temporary pro chair, I'd entertain a motion on election of officers. I'll take nominees.
I'd like to nominate Casey Doe for vice chair.
Any other nominations?
Thanks, guys.
All right, vote on that, eh? Please vote.
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Congratulations on Casey.
Thank you, thank you.
We still have a nomination for chair as well.
Make a motion, we make Mark Lyon the chairperson for...
For the second? Can I get a second on that?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
All right, Mr. Lyon, you get the middle seat.
You want me to move over? I wanna stay in my little corner. Yeah.
Were you already called?
Huh?
No, no.
Yeah.
Kelly Richard was.
Yeah.
That's why I had to do this. All right. We'll call this meeting to order. If you can, everybody rise and do the congratulations with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. It looks like we have a full house today, and I'd like to welcome Tim and Tiffany to the board. Look forward to going through some of the fun things that we do here on this board with you guys, so, thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the staff report?
I'll make the motion, we accept the staff report for last month.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve or correct the minutes of June 11th regular meeting. Can I get approval?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from last month's meeting.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The following applications were heard and approved at the June 17th Board of County Commissioners meeting, a conditional use permit for impound salvage and storage yard located at 18 Wilkins Peak Road, and an NOI for language amendments to sections four, five, seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-one of the 2015 Sweetwater County zoning resolutions, which you guys should have with you today, if you have any questions on that. All right, we can move into our public hearing, or actually into our first public hearing. Cassidy.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So our first public hearing today is for a conditional use permit, and the applicant is Troy Clark with LNP Towing and Recovery. Property is owned by Clark Brothers Enterprises. The property that we're looking at, legal description there, it's two parcels of parcels of land, approximately 7.16 acres in the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section 35, township 20, range 105, otherwise known as 99 Reliance Road. The current zoning there is heavy industrial, and it is located within the growth management area. The existing infrastructure is Fire District number one, North Sweetwater Water and Sewer District, City of Rock Springs Water, Rocky Mountain Power, Dominion Energy National Gas, Natural Gas, and then Reliance Road, which is County Road 42. So for a little bit of background here, and just basically to summarize what we're doing here today for this conditional use permit, LNP Towing and Recovery were granted a conditional use permit in July of 2023 to operate at the 99 Reliance Road location, and they've been in compliance with us since that time. And the applicant is just looking to renew that conditional use permit in order to continue operating a salvage, towing, and recovery yard at that location. Here's our zoning map, and you can see that this property is surrounded by other heavy industrial use zoned properties, as well as some light industrial use agricultural zoning, and then there is some residential zoning here in the southwest corner of the property, or of that section there. One thing that I'd wanna point out before we go too far into this is just that we do have a regulation that states that salvage impound towing yards can't be within 600 feet of residential zoning districts. This is not quite 600 feet from there, however, that little tip down here, closest to the salvage yard, is just its storage for the BNR trailer court right there. So it's no actual residences right nearby. Here's our postings that we did, so public notice sign, and then the view to the north, south, east, and west of the property. And that'll bring us into our conditional use permit review criteria. So we do have some special requirements again, and the first is that it can't be established within 600 feet of a church, school, or residential zoning district, or within one mile of a recreational facility. So the actual distance there is about 340 feet to residential zoning. But within that, once that residential zoning starts, there's about 520 feet of storage space there for BNR Mobile Home Park. The residences within the BNR Mobile Home Park are approximately 860 feet southwest of the subject parcel. And there's also not a church or school within 600 feet, or a recreational facility within a mile of the property. As always, the applicant will be responsible for maintenance and proper disposal methods in conformity with DEQ regulations. And then we do have some regulations regarding screening. When this conditional use permit was granted in 2023, staff recommended that 100% screening be required along the southwest and east boundaries of the property, because the property does front along Reliance Road. And we wanted to provide, you know, a visual break as people drive along that road. And the applicant has complied with this condition, and the facility is fully screened. All right. The next requirement is that no stacking of vehicles is allowed over six feet in height unless approved by the board. And staff actually recommends that no stacking above six feet will be allowed. The business must be licensed with the state of Wyoming, and the applicant has provided a copy of this license to the land use department. And our final requirement here is just that conditional use permits for impound salvage and storage yards for vehicles are termed for two years, at which time a new application may be submitted, which is this application we're hearing today. And subsequent conditional use permits may be termed for a period established by the board. So because this, they, because the applicant has been in compliance with county regulations, and they've already gone through the two-year initial term there with us, if the board approves, staff requests that this conditional use permit be renewed for an indefinite period of time, as long as the applicant remains in compliance with all state and county regulations. We did receive two agency comments, one from Mark Berry with Lumen, and one from Ryan Reed, Senior Mining Engineer. Mark Berry stated that Lumen does have some, they have, they are in that area, Lumen is, but if construction is not required, then they don't have a conflict, and there's no construction being proposed for for this parcel. And then Brian Reed, Senior Mining Engineer, stated that the properties have no AML concerns with regard to abandoned historic mines. And that'll take us right into staff recommendations. Staff recommends approval of this conditional use permit for an impound and storage yard operated by LNP Towing and Recovery with the following conditions. First, the conditional use permit is personal to LNP Towing and Recovery for 99 Reliance Road. Second, the conditional use permit is approved for an indefinite period of time from the date of approval by the Board of County Commissioners. Three, the conditional use permit is in effect as long as the business remains in compliance with county regulations, and holds a valid Wyoming vehicle storage and disposal facility license. Four, the existing 100% permanent fencing along the southwest and east boundaries of the subject property shall be maintained, and five, vehicles cannot be stacked higher than six feet. And that will bring us to the end of the first public hearing, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Would you like to come up and state your name and let us know anything that we may need to know about this?
My name is Troy Clark. I'm the owner of LNP Towing and Recovery out in Reliance. We had to purchase this property because the property that I got along with the company was bordering that trailer park, so as soon as I bought this company, I had to go and buy this property as well. I've followed every recommendation you guys have given me, doing my best to run my business and provide for my family, so anything I can do to make this easier for all of us, I'm willing to help and do what I can.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
No, he's right up the road from me. I have a place out in Reliance, and we've had no issues with it, and it's screened nicely, and so no problems.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'd like to open this up to the public hearing. Is there anybody for or against this recommendation? Seeing none? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the public hearing number one with the stack recommendations for Troy Clark.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to public hearing number two.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the public hearing number two is for a zoning map amendment. And I believe on yours, the current zoning, there is a mistake on there. I caught it after we printed all the packets. But the applicant is Carl McLeory, and this is 404 acre parcel of land. The address is 989 Antelope Drive in Rock Springs. The current zoning is light industrial, and this is where I think what I have here differs from what you have in your packets, so that's why, and I apologize for that. And we're looking to rezone, or the applicant is looking to rezone to R2SF. The existing infrastructure is Fire District number one Response Area, White Mountain Water and Sewer District, and then Antelope Drive, which is County Road 1231. So the applicant has purchased this property and is currently in the process of renovating the residence that's on the property already, with the intent of residing there. But with it being zoned for light industrial use, a residence isn't allowed, is not permitted as a primary use of the property. So we're looking to do a zone map amendment for that to be able to be the primary use, is for it to be a residential property. So here's the zoning map of the area. As you can see, there's a lot of residential zoning surrounding this property. And the reason we're looking to go to R2SF instead of R2 is the county is not wanting to designate any more zone, art parcels as R2. As it's like a mixed residential zone district, R2SF would much more nicely fit the needs of the applicant as well, and there's adjacent properties here that are also zoned R2SF. Here's our public notice that we've posted, and then view to the north, south, east, and west of the property. And that brings us to the review criteria for zone map amendment. The first is that this on map amendment is consistent and compatible with the current resolution and the comprehensive plan. Staff finds that it is, this will encourage growth and development to continue in an orderly manner, and it'll be just really nice, this kind of covers some of what I'd speak to on the second criteria as well, that changing the zoning here to R2SF will clean up the zoning, because it's like some leftover maybe spot zoning that had occurred in the past, and so it doesn't really make sense to have a light industrial zoning district right there, surrounded by all of this residential property. Our third is that the proposed zoning is compatible with existing or allowable uses of adjacent properties, and it is, as you saw, lots of other residential zoning around this property. And then the fourth is that the proposed zoning can demonstrate adequate public facilities, including road, drainage, potable water, sanitary sewer, and place and fire protection will exist, or will exist to serve the requested use at the time such facilities are needed. There are adequate facilities already located on the existing property. That is all good and set to go there. Five, the amendment shall not adversely affect adjacent properties, communities, or the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Sweetwater County. This amendment does not adversely affect adjacent properties, in fact, I would say that it actually would benefit to have more residential zoning right there. And we've also not received any comments from adjacent property owners. And the final is that the request conforms to all applicable provisions of this resolution, and it does. We received two agency comments, one from Ryan Reed, Senior Mining Engineer, stating that the property has no AML concerns with regard to abandoned historic mines, and Mark Berry with Lumen said that there's no conflict for Lumen. And that just brings us to our, the staff recommendation, and staff recommends approval of this on map amendment from light industrial to single-family residential. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, and sorry, the applicant is present as well.
Okay, would the applicant like to approach and you'll state your name and?
Morning. My name's Carl McLeory. So I'm just asking that that be changed from industrial to residential, so I can use it at home.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it to public comment. Is there any public comment for or against this zone change? Seeing none? I'll entertain a motion. Question? Oh, go ahead. So on the zoning map, it looks like there's wanna call it a lot or a description that's indicated with C. What is that?
That is a commercial zoning district. I'm not sure exactly what's on the property right there, though.
So is that property landlocked?
Ah, that's a great question. It looks like it is, but I don't know more without looking a little bit into it.
Okay.
The nice thing about changing that from a light industrial to residential too is light industrial, as you know, you can store gravel, rock, I mean, there's a, it's unsightly. So changing it to R2, which more restrictive, you can't have construction, so it's, it'll actually be an improvement, so just let everybody know. Being surrounded by R2 now, having light industrial like Cassidy said, that makes no sense. I would change it in a heartbeat to R2 if we could.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Okay, now I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion, we approve public hearing number two for the zone map amendment.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to public hearing number three.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Public hearing number three is another conditional use permit, and it is for applicants Michael and Connie Mitchell. For a, they have a 1.13 acre parcel located at Cedar Cliff Estates, Lot 6, and part B of track, and part of tract B. The address is for Lakeview Circle in Washam, and the current zoning is rural residential. The infrastructure is City of Manila Water, they have a septic system, and then they're also on Lakeview Circle, which is County Road 1194. Here's our zoning and location maps. You can see that they are, the applicants are surrounded by rural residential zoning, and then on to the east side, there's also R2 zoning. So what we've got going on here is that our applicants, Michael and Connie Mitchell, they're proposing to construct a shop for their personal use on said property that's in excess of 200% the square, or the gross floor area of their residence. This is a request that's allowable within the rural residential zoning district, which they're in with a conditional use permit. Here we can see their site plan that they've submitted to us. You can see where the proposed accessory building would be. It meets setback requirements, and it, you know, it meets the requirements that we have for an accessory building. Then we've got our posting of the public notice and images to the north, south, east, and west of the property. And then we'll get into the conditional use review criteria. The first is that the request is consistent with all applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan, and it is in alignment with the county objective to maintain county land and use plans and regulations that reflect citizen preferences. You know, people live in these rural residential zones, they like to have those larger accessory structures, and that's something, you know, that we have the flexibility to allow them to do within that type of zoning. Second, their request shall not adversely affect adjacent properties, and staff does not foresee this request negatively impacting adjacent property owners, or properties. Third is that the request is compatible with the existing or allowable uses of adjacent properties, and it is, again, the majority of the adjacent properties are also zoned for rural residential use, and the other being zoned for mixed residential or R2. And this request is actually allowable in both the rural residential and mixed residential zoning districts with a conditional use permit. There are adequate facilities to accommodate this request, and legal access to the property exists, and the structure will be maintained, so covering criteria four and five there. Six is that the request has minimized to the greatest degree possible adverse effects on the natural environment. Staff does not anticipate any adverse effects on the natural environment here. The request will not create undue traffic congestion, and we don't foresee any additional traffic being created by them having a larger shop. The request will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, and staff also does not foresee an adverse effect on public health, safety, or welfare as a result of fulfilling the request. And then finally, the request conforms to all applicable provisions of the resolution, and all resolution provisions have been met with this request. Two agency comments, again, Mark Berry with Lumen stated that he doesn't have any records of this area and has no conflict with the project, and then Ryan Reed, Senior Mining Engineer, stated that the properties have no AML concern with regard to abandoned historic mines. And the staff recommendation for this proposal is that we recommend approval for a conditional use permit for that we recommend approval for a conditional use permit for a shop in excess of two hundred percent the gross floor area of the primary residence. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Applicant is also here, so sorry. Hey.
Is applicant here to, they'd like to make a comment or?
Hi, I'm Mike Mitchell. Uh, I don't know. I guess after just laying out our shop and seeing what we, our needs were, we ended up being like two hundred feet overs all, so that's where we're at.
Wasn't too far off then, huh?
No.
Um, I guess my only one is, uh, we're making sure we're following setbacks and whatnot during this application.
Okay, and there was none of your neighbors had no complaints? Cause I'm looking at some of the pictures. Looks like they have buildings, also buildings. So, yeah. I'd want the same thing.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll open up for public comment. Anybody here in to approve or deny this request? Seeing none? If the board doesn't have any other questions or comments? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve public hearing number three.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Eric.
All right. Wow. Struggling over here. Struggle bus. Okay, wait for that to come up. Hopefully that comes. Okay. Wow, okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So want to welcome Tiffany and welcome Tim to the Planning and Zoning Commission. This will be a little redundant for the existing um Planning and Zoning Commission members. I'm, I'm not even sure John even sat through this one, um, cause he's fairly new. So this is just, we're just going to go over basically the bylaws that we have. And then at the next meeting, we're going to do more of a little in-depth on zoning, just to kind of give you a, what kind of applications you hear and such like that. One thing I want to touch on a little bit today, because we get a lot of questions about it, and also we have Mr. Daleon here too, if he would like to chime in at that time, is on conflicts of interest. If there's any concerns that you ever have, feel free to reach out to myself. I can get with John. Um, that does come up. We're a small community, and so sometimes we can be involved with a project and there might be a conflict there. But sometimes it's not always a conflict. It's definitely a per- personal preference when it comes down to it. But we'll talk a little bit about it as we move along. So again, welcome. Let's see here. This thing is not reacting. There we go. So we're going to talk about some of the plans we have, land use department, planning and zoning commission, meetings, orders of business, procedures of public hearings, conduct, commenting, and then procedural for formal action. So in the statute, in Wyoming statute is where we have what gives the authority to, for the counties to have a planning and zoning commission. So not every county in Wyoming has zoning. Um, take for instance, Uwena County. The county does not have zoning. That, there's an example there, although they do have subdivision laws throughout the entire state. So all subdivisions have to be reviewed. So there's usually a planning department in about every community, but when you get down to those really small ones, um, not necessarily. So even Big Horn County, I don't believe they have zoning either. Um, but your bigger counties, Sweetwater, Natrona, Gillette, Campbell County, Albany and uh Laramie County all have zoning. But that's the statute right there. And it just states what gives you authority to prepare and amend a comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is a little bit different than a zoning resolution. Uh, you, there was a, I believe it was a bill a few years ago where you cannot regulate from a comprehensive plan. We had a community that was doing that and was denying things based on the comprehensive plan. It has to be based on what's in the zoning resolution. So if we ever, if you ever deny something, it has to be based on a regulation that's in our zoning resolution, not the comprehensive plan. We refer to it when we're evaluating zone changes a- as an overall picture, but it should never be based on that, that issue. It needs to be in the zoning. So here in Sweetwater County, we have a zoning resolution. We have a comprehensive plan. We have a growth management plan, and then we have subdivision regulations. And unfortunately, they're all separate books. So especially when it gets between the zoning resolution, the growth management plan, my goal is in the next couple of years to integrate those in together. What happens with staff when they're reviewing applications, they come in and they review the zoning resolution, but then they don't review the growth management plan. And knowing where to look in both plans can be confusing. It'd be great to have that all consolidated into one thing. This is our organization right now. So I work directly for the Board of County Commissioners. And then underneath me, I have uh code enforcement, which Alan is on vacation, but he is our code enforcement. He also does fire inspections, and he's also our fire warden. And then our public lands planner, of course, Cassidy Brown, and then our administrative assistant in the back there is Connie Van Meter. Uh, as far as GIS goes, that is now contracted through the assessors office for the time being. We'll see how it goes. So planning and zoning, it's five members. Uh, they're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners as Commissioner Slaughter is in, is in with us today. They, you have a chair, vice chair, three members, this is crucial, reside in the unincorporated areas of Sweetwater County. So Mark, Tiffany and John all reside in the unincorporated. So there's our three. And then we have both Casey and Tim that are located in the cities. So you can have all five unincorporated, but you need a member, at least um you at NIS lead three by statute. Quorum is three. Uh, we've had this happen before. We do reach out. Uh, Cassidy will send an email or Connie will just to see, make sure who's going to be here. Because if we have, and this has happened, where we had two P and Z members show up, and then we have an applicant here. And sometimes they're out of state. Uh, we get a lot of out of state applicants here, and then they they're pretty irritated because they're here to, you know, it's development, and there, it's why it's really important that we have at least three members here. Uh, three needs, three votes to carry that motion. What we did make a change here, though, is if we only have three Planning and Zoning Commission members, and we made this change in the bylaws, the way it used to read, you would need a, the majority all the time. So if you only have three here, you had to have three votes to pass something. So if it was two to one, even though you had a majority, you would um, it wouldn't pass. So we changed that. So three now. It can be two to one if there's three here, um, as far as passing something. Conflict of interest. Um, so if there's a financial interest, and we can talk a little bit about this, disclose his, disclose his or hers interest and be disqualified for voting on the matter, and the record, no vote will be cast by that member. Usually that member excuses themselves for the hearing, so there's no influence there. Um, so uh if you do have a conflict of interest, the key thing there is, uh, when you're looking at, I've served on boards and is, are you going to get a financial gain? That's a clear cut conflict of interest, and then you just get up, excuse yourself. Now, what if there's only three members? In that case, we still need the three members. You have to declare the conflict of interest and still vote. But you do have to declare what your conflict of interest is. Um, that's kind of a part of Robert's Rules of Order, which is what we follow here, the motions, the seconds, discussion, all that is through Robert's Rules of Order. The, so that's the key thing. Um, sometimes you could be working on a project and you feel like there might be some sort of conflict there that might bias you towards something. Then of course, feel free to uh recuse yourself. But uh, if there's any questions on that in the future when things come up, you know, let us know. Any questions, Mr. Chairman? Anybody have on that?
Any questions?
Okay, if they come up, you know, um, feel free to reach out. Uh, P and Z Commission can coordinate with land use staff. Uh, they may establish advisory committees, so that's through the chair does the appointments. Uh, usually the chair will ask if anyone's interested. And that, we had one with campgrounds, myself, um, Mark Lyon and John Jasperson all sat down together and discussed that. It can, obviously cannot be three, because then you have a quorum. So at least two members can serve as, on an advisory committee when we're working on things. All meetings are open to the public without, so even if we have a special meeting, so if we have a workshop, those are open to the public. Not necessarily that means that they can, the public can ask questions, especially in a workshop, that's up to the chair, up to the discretion. But they are open to the public. Our first regular meeting, which was uh, which was today of the year, uh, was in July, which is our fiscal, which follows our fiscal year. And then we meet each month on the second Wednesday of each month, and we will let you know, because sometimes it does come up where we don't have any hearings. So we will let you know. Lately, it hasn't been that way. Special meetings uh may be called by the chairman at least one day in advance. Now, that does need to be advertised, so it, it can't be well, today, because it depends on when the paper publishes, which we have to usually have the article in by Monday.
Is it Tuesday?
By Tuesday.
Eric, wasn't we going to try to change that? Uh, didn't we, didn't we talk to John and hear a while back about changing that, just by going through the paper? Because of social media, you know, Sweetwater now. Remember, remember a while back, we did talk about that?
We had a discussion about that, so that's going to require statutory change. Uh, the legislature has brought that matter up several times, and it has not been successful.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, I think that's the direction we should move in. County pays a lot in publication costs. Uh, we're small potatoes in the land use department compared to the clerk's office, treasurer's office, they, they have, and assessors, because they're just, they're required by statute to publish those things, and so minutes and all that. So, yeah, I, that's where most people are getting their information, whether it's Cowboy State Daily Online, social media, but right now it has to be in the paper by the county designated paper, which is the Green River Star right now. So that, any meeting can be recessed. So what that means, and we've had this happen before, we had a cell tower was in Granger, and we drove out there because we wanted to see the visual effects of what it would look like. And the whole entire Planning and Zoning Commission drove out there, looked at it, and then came back. So you can recess, uh, if you want more information or just need a break. Uh, executive session, and I've been here over twenty years. I've never, oh, yes, we have. We did. We had one executive session. That's right. That's right. That's right. And it was a legal matter. They're very specific as to what you can discuss, and it can't be just, I mean, it has to be legal or um, and it won't be employment, employees, because uh Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't employ anyone, so.
Guys, we don't get paid.
Sorry.
You didn't know.
If you didn't know. Okay. Order of business, this is, it's actually in our bylaws. Everything I'm going through is actually in our bylaws. Call to order. I won't go through this because we just literally went through it, so we have that all l- laid out for us. Procedures, appearances, uh, anyone can request to appear in running two weeks prior to the meeting. Uh, all formal actions shall be in the form, this is a recommending board. This is an advisory board, so the, and that is by statute. And so you, now, when you get in the city, like City Rock Springs or Green River, conditional use permits are heard at Planning and Zoning Commission. They are not heard by the councils. Here at the county, they are heard. They are heard before the Board of County Commissioners, so your advisory. The, there is two cases where you're actually making an authorization, which is preliminary plots, and that's the final step. It's a preliminary plot on a subdivision. And I'm trying to think on another one. Maybe that is the only one. It used to be firework stands were another one too, but I can't think of one right now. Can you? No? Okay, all right.
So the, the, the uh the, the hearings we heard today, those will all go to uh county commissioners next week?
Yep.
So it's, then it becomes legal?
That's right.
So he can't stay at his house property tonight because we made a motion to approve it.
No, it's not until that, not until Tuesday. Yeah. And so another good point, Tim, is, is that um, let's say you guys vote to deny, that still goes to the Board of County Commissioners regardless. It's a negative recommendation.
They can still approve.
And they can approve it. Right, exactly.
And we, we voted for an approval of a project. County Commissioners turned around. This is before Rob's time, County Commissioners turned around. They didn't use our recommendation. They voted against it.
Yep.
And so.
It goes both ways. That's right. Yeah, it does.
And so would you like me to announce that? Cause I did not do that today, but when it will be coming up for the uh county commissioners meeting?
Yeah.
Apicans. I mean, I'm sure they know about that, but.
But it sometimes helps that, because sometimes they walk out and they think, oh, that, I am done. Just move on. Yeah. I'm sure they like to be done, but yeah, that's, but yeah, that's, yes. And then this is another step, but um before the, so if it's a negative recommendation, commissioners vote against it, they can also appeal. So there's another step that people can take too. If they don't like what the commissioners said, they can appeal that to district court. And then when it goes before a judge, it's not a hearing, it's, they review it. Were, and what they're reviewing is, did they fall, did they commissioners and the Planning and Zoning Commission, the whole record, did they follow the regulations? That's what they're looking for. That's the key thing there.
Eric, step back. You said we we approve a preliminary plat?
Authorized. Yeah.
So, but the final plats or the subdivision goes through?
Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of County Commissioners. Yeah, and so, and then on a, that's on a major subdivision. On a minor subdivision, when there's only a sketch and final, you're not going to see anything until, so you will, you'll see a final plat. You won't have seen a preliminary, which is uh four lots. It's a four lot subdivision usually. And uh, so then, and then on a replat is actually administrative. You won't even see those. That's approved by staff. But yeah, no, great question.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, that's a great, thank you, John. That's a great point. We've had a lot of discussions about that. When we're presenting staff, this is your professional staff sitting here giving you what our recommendation is. There are time, very small amount of times, I believe Cassidy had one at the campground because she was waiting to see what additional public comments would have come in. That would have maybe added a condition on to a staff recommendation. And the key thing that John's getting at right there is, that's why when we go through those different criteria in a conditional use permit, that's what a decision should be based on. Not because, well, I don't like it. Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't want that there. Um, I'm opposed to it. I don't like that type of use or things like that. That opens it up for scrutiny, obviously, if you do that. Telecommunication towers is the one thing you can get yourself into trouble with. Same thing is like anything with freedom of speech, like uh that's communication, because there's a lot of federal regulations on that. We've had, that's a good example where there's a regulation that counties or municipalities cannot regulate RF emissions. That's the, those are the emissions that come off of your phone, and that's what comes off of your, a cell tower. And you'll get a cell tower permit, and then it'll be, well, I'm not going to approve this because it's going to produce RF emissions. Well, the federal government protects that. Now, they do need to abide by the FCC requirements on RF emissions. But that's not a good reason to deny a permit. Aesthetics, maybe it'll fall down and, and land on someone's house. That's a whole other story. But when it comes to things like that, so if we're making decisions on denial, that's usually where, or approval, it should be based on the regulations that we have, and that's why Cassidy produces that information to you. So it's, it's a key integral part. So when John and myself, like Love's Truck Stop, was denied, it was based on an incomplete application. Didn't follow all the regulations. It's usually one, one of the big things that, that will kill or deny a permit is if it does not follow the regulations or it's incomplete. You know, they, they failed to do this, or they failed to do that. That is a That is a clear cut way of supporting a, a denial of something. Or approval too, because maybe something's controversial. Um, the campground was controversial, but it met the requirements. It met our current requirements. So, that's pro, that's our, that's what's embedded in our constitution on the 14th amendment is proper due process. And that's showing that, you know, things are based on actual things that are based on regulations, so.
So an incomplete application, why did they get to this point? They're just, they want to have a hearing?
That can happen, or something, um, they could submit, well, there's a compliance issue too, I should say. Um, so we've had that, uh, where we'll sometimes take it in and, and staff's been to blame for this too, where we take something in, because they'll say, well, we'll get that to you. We're going to get that to you, I promise. And then we're trying to be accommodating. And then you get to the planning and zoning, and I can think of one in particular that just happened a few months ago. We let them know, I don't think this is going to go through, well, I still want it, I think we're fine. That just happens, yeah.
Now, when we tabled that, was it, uh, we gave them the opportunity to come back?
We did, and then they can.
We didn't vote no on.
No. And so you, you have the option of tabling. Um, there is a distinction between tabling and postponing. Yeah, as we know, postponing is usually a better, especially if they want to complete something, because you don't set a time period on that. Tabling, you have to bring it up at the next meeting. Where postponing, you could say, you know what, you need to do this, you need to go meet with the community members and sort things out. Okay, that's probably a good postponement. If it's something you know you're going to be able to, them to be able to get, but usually that's the preference, and then they can just bring it up at a later time, so. Yeah. Yeah.
I think, like, that's sometimes what comments are, when, when, you know, other comments. You'll have a clear situation where you can tell this is somebody that the community really supports, and this is a situation where the community doesn't support, and therefore they're coming to you, and they're, the board of county commissioners, and you don't, don't like us. And but, the way the regulations are identified, as Eric pointed out, it lists criteria for any particular question today versus conditional use, that's right. And so there are specific criteria. Those are the determining factors. And the factor that you would like to say, did they meet these criteria of the regulations? Yes or no, not, do I like that particular person? And so, you know, that's, that's, and you review those. And in the, in the case of Love's, the example was, uh, one of the requirements. And, you know, sometimes you have criteria, and those criteria point to another criteria within the regulations. And that's what you're looking for. And in that particular case, there were the criteria that pointed to another criteria that Love's would give the initial set of criteria, or missed a back set of criteria, which was in that particular case, you're supposed to talk to the department of health, the, the Sweetwater County Department of Health. And if you didn't have that conversation in and of itself, that's a, that's a thing that could be used. And in that case, it was one of the factors.
One of the factors, yeah.
That was, and that's why, you know, if there is a denial, as Eric pointed out, then there's a process where there's a, the board of county commissioners, they would have to defend that denial. And it would have to be based on a criteria having not been met. And so there's pressure then, uh, when you're going to the district court. And that's what the district court's looking at is, did they, or did they not meet the criteria? And did the board of county commissioners, uh, identify criteria that were not met? And that's.
Yeah, exactly. Awesome, any questions? Okay. Thanks, John. So, all your formal actions, uh, are in the form of a recommendation? The chairman signs those recommendations? And then, procedures for public hearing, purpose, obtaining information, comments, uh, time and place of hearing, this is by statute, you're advertised for 30 days. And any person may petition the planning and zoning commission for an amendment. That's through a land, um, sorry, a language amendment. So, anyone of the public can actually submit a, and it goes through our department and then we present it to you. We've had that happen before, so. You're usually not successful if staff's not in support of it. So, always encourage the public to work with us on that. Procedures for public hearings, hearings initiated by the planning and zoning commission, um, under that statute, appearance, written comments. We, we, we receive comments and then we provide them to you. Of course, they can't submit comments all the way up to the meeting. So that's why sometimes after the staff report, we try to get to that to you on Friday. Comments come in afterwards, and then Cassidy usually forwards those, not usually, does forward those on. And then conduct. You, you saw it today, uh, chairman opens it up for public comment. All public comment goes through the chair. Okay, so that's the important thing. What we don't want to get into is a cross discussion, what happens sometimes where, and what I mean by that is more, if someone's in the audience and then is at, and then there's a discussion between the audience and the applicant, everything needs to go through the chairman. And then once the chairman recognizes, only one individual at a time, and each person in a group shall be limited to a time designated by the chairman. Uh, we do that sometimes if we have a full house. Chairman asks questions of staff and applicants, you saw, standards of public conduct, recognizes those wishing to comment. Uh, procedurals. Yeah, consideration of application, use of following information sources, plans, regulations, that's the important one. And as John even was stating, as we were talking about, it needs to be in the regulation, not the comprehensive plan by statute. And then we can always ask Mr. De Leon too, if we get any procedural issues and, and regulation questions. Roberts rules of order. Um, what I thought I, and I haven't done this in a while, but we could look at some training. And there is some basic stuff that, um, that we do, but sometimes it, it gets into some little more complicated things, but we can always, uh, there, there is an outreach office that does provide free training too, so. But there's a motion, there's a second, then there's discussion. Okay, and then vote. Yeah, anything you have, John, on Roberts? Go ahead.
It's true that, you know, sometimes you want to do a motion to table. If something's not quite right, uh, if there's more information that you want, uh, then, you know, the, a lot of times, a board will want to, their, their instinct will be to say, hey, I'd like to table this. Uh, tabling is, uh, I usually, as soon as somebody starts talking about tabling, I'm usually looking right at Eric.
Waving hands.
Tabling, technically speaking, you have to bring it up at the next meeting. And if, a lot of times it looks like it's going to come up at the next meeting, you're wanting to show good faith to the applicant, that you, hey, you're going to stay on top of this, you're not trying to filibuster the situation and just let it die. And so you, you, sometimes, though, all those instincts will kick in and you'll take favor. But postpone does not have to be done at the next meeting. And it's amazing how many times, it has absolutely nothing to do with good faith, and you really are trying to address somebody, but something will come up, the meeting's going to end up going away, and you, you're not addressing it at the next meeting, you're addressing it two down the road. And so, I generally think that a motion to postpone is the better default position. And occasionally, it might, it might be appropriate to table instead of postpone. What do you think, Casey, or you're not like?
Uh, no, I'm agreeing with you a hundred percent, yeah. Yes. Yes, though, I was thinking about that one instance that we had, and John brought it to our attention, the postponing, and then we, we went to executive and we did, did discuss it in there. And then we went back to postpone it, and the applicant did not like me. So not everybody's going to like you guys, so trust me. But yeah, John is correct, yeah, I like that a lot better.
There's that, and there, you know, there, you know, I guess the only other thing that's, you know, there will be, um.
Can the applicant ask for, uh, a table? Or would that be up to the commissioners? Yeah.
There'd be more, um, results. As board members are the only ones with the privilege, and maybe to make a motion.
But if they, they, that kind of ties our hand, okay, we table, it comes up to the next meeting, they don't show up, then it's, then it's tossed.
Yeah, that's, but you could also, that's true.
Yeah.
That's, that's a fair point. Uh, if, if there isn't any action, if it's tabled, then it doesn't come up yet.
Yep.
Which, and I will, just as, identifying the advantage and disadvantage of that, um, clear advantage in that scenario, but I would also, you know, you would also want to bear in mind, there are some situations where an application is made. Once it is, uh, not acted on, and then it can take a year before they're able to apply.
Yeah.
So there, and you know, I, and Casey, I'll, I'll talk to Eric a little bit more about that, because generally speaking, when a, uh, there is a little bit of a difference between the board of county commissioners and a legal decision. And with you guys as a board, because you're a recommending board.
Yeah.
Because I'll definitely contemplate that just a little bit, and talk to Eric about if an issue is tabled and then not taken off the table, what are the implications of that for a board that is, that is advising in nature?
Well, I'm just thinking, just, I, I'm playing devil's advocate here, John. I'm just thinking, let's say we have a, uh, somebody comes in and unruly, and they don't have all their ducks in a row, and they've been, they've been difficult. They come up and we understand that they're not ready. And we've had enough of this, I mean, we've dealt with it, dealt with it, we said, we're going to table it. We table it and it's coming up for the next month. They don't show up, it's tossed for a year then. And then they can give, they either come back a year later with all their stuff that they need, or else they don't come back at all.
Yeah. An option would be that, egg is not here, therefore is not being addressed. The other option would be to make a motion to take it from the table, and then make a recommendation based on fact, that they, that they're not here.
Yeah.
So I, of those two, my inclination would be to take it from the table, um, and, and get it done, uh, and have, so that there's an actual recommendation there, so.
As you can tell the difference between somebody who wants to postpone and then somebody who wants it, I mean, yeah.
So with the postponement, do you have to take that out as well, or is that just with the table?
Uh, no, it would just, it would, it's not quite saying you don't make a motion to.
Remove it.
It would just be on the agenda.
Okay.
Whenever.
It comes up. Okay.
John, another question for you on tabling. That hat, if it does not get on table, then that dies, correct? At the next, so if you do not table? Yeah.
He found funding caution, knowing that this is an advisory board, um, and the ability to, I, I could see in most situations where I'd be talking to you, that above we have the preference to have it taken from the table and have the vote. So it's not just Ron's rule.
Yeah.
That's determined that it died, but also the vote. So you'd have, have two, two layers of protection.
Okay.
So, again, if you can determine which course of action is preferred, you as a board will make that decision, right? And now, those are scenarios where currently to have an executive discussion, because you're getting into, you know, discussions, legal discussions by nature, confidential. And here, you know, a lot of times, there'll be times where a board will say, hey, Eric or attorney, what's the, what are the legal implications here? And then my job is to tell you not to necessarily, you know, advise anybody, it's, it's too new. Um, so there, there could, that could be a scenario where you would say, you know what, we're, we're seeking some legal advice here, and we, uh,
Exactly.
It would be an example of a time, even though it is rare. But, um, there, you, you can see in a situation and have appellate implications versus just more being enforced. And that's, that's where you probably.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Okay.
So in the, in the process for moving through a application, subdivision or whatever, is there a timeline that they have to start and end that? The, beginning with your office to the commissioners?
So there's a minimum of 30 days that you'd have to advertise it. Uh, we usually, you schedule it when you have a complete application. So that, from then on, it's 30 days. There's a lot of statutory things with subdivisions of the 30 days and such. Language amendments are an interesting one, because what we have to do is, we have to go through a process called Administrative Procedures Act where, because I'll have a language amendment coming before you. Uh, actually, I, I have it in the process right now with the commissioners on the RV campground standards. But you'll given a recommendation, just like you normally do, but when it goes to the board of county commissioners, it's a notice of intent. Forty-five days from there, you then approve them. So you don't just approve them, you have to start that process. But with subdivisions, once it's approved by the commissioners, they have six months to record it. And we're looking at maybe changing some things there, so that we're not always requiring bonding. We've had a discussion, Casey, we've talked about that, um, in some of the meetings with Megan and such, when we were working on the subdivision regs, where you could hold a, a plat, what they call hostage, a hostage plat. So then, it wouldn't be recorded until the improvements are put in. So that's another option, right? And so, it's not statutory, that six months, but it is our regulation. So right, right now, Maverick has not recorded their plat yet. So they know they're under a time restraint. I've been going back and forth with them, they have to think till September or sometime around, it's coming up. But we're getting there, we're getting there through the improvements agreement and such like that. But there's a lot of deadlines with subdivisions. Usually they have a year to put the improvements in, and, and then we do not initially, we do not finally accept those roads until they're built correctly. There's a lot of timeframes in there, as we go through, the county has, goes through the process. But, um, once it gets to the planning and zoning commission, and then there's also timeframes on preliminary plats, so let's see if you do approve a preliminary plat. I cannot think off the top of my head, but there are timeframes on that. You don't just hold on a preliminary plat forever. I think it's six months, a year, I can't remember.
A year.
I think it's a year, yeah, so you have a year, so to do, get that final plat in, so.
It like, uh, Truck Stop didn't talk to the health department. So if they didn't do that within this timeline, we're done talking to you, come back in a year? Is that how that works?
No, that, so that, they, so once they submit that application, they would have then until probably the board of county commissioner meeting to, 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 to speak to them. Now, if it got tabled, less, or postponed, it could almost be indefinite, indefinite, you know, yeah. Yeah, there's no timeframe on that.
So what, what, what makes, what makes them ineligible to come back for a year?
So if the board of county commissioners deny, let's say it's a zone change.
Okay.
From Ag to I-1 or something, Ag to Light Industrial, they're done for, it gets denied, it's, they're done for a year.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, now, what it says in the regulations is substantially different. So, that, you know, if somebody comes back and makes a big change to the application, what you don't want is, well, it didn't go through, now I'm going to go apply again. Oh, there's a new person on that board now, now I'm going, you know, and it's just over and over again. Um, way gives it a good time for, but if there's a substantial change, and we've had that, um, Maverick was an example, where they substantially changed their sewage disposal. I would never, unfortunately, that's the example. Not Maverick, sorry, Love's Truck Stop, not Maverick. Love's Truck Stop was the one, where, you've been through it, Casey, the, where there was the one that was discharging into the river. the treatment facility, and then now they're in a holding tank until they get sewer out there, but, um, but it was substantially different each time they applied, so I will say that they were trying, but they weren't just trying to shove the same application through, it was, no, we're gonna have to do it this way. And that would be okay, yeah, yeah.
See, if I was, for instance, if I was Loves, they got denied from the county commissioners, but the, our board recommended it, and if I was them, I'd come back in a year, exact same application and did it again, because then they had different commissioners in here too, but they didn't.
Right, yeah, so.
But they're probably looking for a solution.
This would have been a solution.
Didn't work, now it's moving to be?
No, it was, well, I, I won't get into it, but it, it was a solution, yeah, it was a good solution.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, for, for today.
Yeah. Well, if nobody has any other questions or comments?
This was good, thank you.
You bet, betcha.
Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion when you adjourn.
Second? Call a favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, Ted, the chair was just like super calm.
Well, I did too.
Advice, I thought, I thought.